Start the recording back. I think we're recording now. So, thank you for being here and joining us. We'll be doing the Book of Acts, which I shared with some of y'all who took part in the Revelation Bible study, that I think the Book of Acts is the scariest book in the Bible, not the Book of Revelation, the Book of Acts. So there's just so, so many just great things. So, I thought I would start off with a little bit of an introduction about the book itself. And if at any time you have a question or whatever, feel free to interrupt me and pose your question or comment or whatever. But, so Acts is kind of like Volume Two of Luke's Gospel. A lot of folks don't realize that because since it's not just, just placed right after Luke's Gospel, a lot of folks don't realize that the Book of Acts is actually like the second volume of Luke's Gospel. The first volume being the Gospel of Luke, and then, and you know, so it tells all about the life of Jesus. But the Book of Acts as the second volume of the Gospel of Luke tells all about the life of the early church. And so I really didn't realize that for years until I'd gotten to college and really started looking at stuff. And both of them were written to a guy named Theophilus. And so they're, they're both dedicated to this guy, Theophilus. You ever heard of him? Anybody? Radio silence, huh?
No.
No. Well, he have been a real person. It's possible that he was Luke's benefactor and that maybe he was paying for Luke to, to sit down and write all of this and to get it distributed to folks in the church. It's also possible that he is a fictitious person. And the reason I would say that is because of his name. Theo comes from, Theophilus, Theos, God, and Philos, Philus, you know, love. So what it means is lover of God. So it's very possible that Luke is simply writing this, Volume Two, and, and his Gospel to anybody that is a lover of God. So that's a one possibility as well. So anyway, I, uh, it's funny that it's called the Acts of the Apostles though, because it's really not all that much about the apostles. The apostles show up at the very beginning for a little while, but then later on, it's, it's more about Paul. But throughout, I think that it's more about the Holy Spirit than it is about any one person or character. Because the Holy Spirit shows up throughout the whole thing and it's, it's really kind of a Gospel of the Holy Spirit sort of thing in that it recounts the ways in which the, the Spirit was moving in the early church. So Acts is a continuation of Luke's Gospel and it talks a lot about the Holy Spirit. But Acts as a book defies any sort of literary genre or character because it's kind of a mixture of all sorts of things. It's part biography, it's part history, it's part apology. Like not, "I'm sorry" apology, but this is why something is what it is, is known as apologetics. It's a rhetorical tool. It's also part letter, it's part homily, and also part travel journal. So there's all sorts of different genres, bridges, and kind of defies being neatly put into any one of them. And so let's, uh, let's start off with the, I'm gonna share my screen again and go on here to our, let me move things around on my end so I can see everything okay. Okay, so would someone like to, to start off reading for us this first little section?
Not me. I can't hear.
The connection might not be too good. Oftentimes it makes people sound like cyborgs whenever the internet connection might not be going very well. Well, I tell you what, I'll, I'll start off reading.
All that Jesus.
Oh, okay, here. Eunice was back for a minute. Okay, Eunice, you back with us now? Nope. So what I'll do, I'll just mute her for right now and then I'll unmute her here in a second once her stuff catches back up. So, okay, sorry, Eunice, I got you muted. Your, your connection wasn't coming through and we couldn't hear. But thanks for your willingness to read. I'll, I'll try to have you do it here in just a bit. But in the first book, Theophilus, I wrote about all that Jesus did and talked from the beginning until the day when he was taken up to heaven after giving instructions through the Holy Spirit to the apostles whom he had chosen. After his suffering, he presented himself alive to them by many convincing proofs, appearing to them during forty days and speaking about the kingdom of God. While staying with him, he ordered them not to leave Jerusalem but to wait there for the promise of the Father. This, he said, is what you've heard from me, for John baptized with water, but you will be baptized with the Holy Spirit not many days from now. And so it's, it's interesting because, let me, let me back us up just a minute. And let me unmute Terry and Eunice here. Okay, well, are y'all unmuted yet? I'm trying. I'm hitting the button, but it's not wanting to work. But let me back us up for just a minute and finish a little bit of the, the intro stuff that I was talking about. Luke is traditionally considered to be one of the disciples, though he's not one of the twelve. There's a list of those that Luke gives us in Chapter Six of Luke's Gospel, verses fourteen through sixteen, and he himself is not named in there. And so it's likely that he was one of those seventy that are spoken about, where Jesus sent out the seventy. And so in that, it's likely that he was one of those unnamed seventy folks that were, were sent out. It's also likely that he was from Antioch in Syria. And he's traditionally known as being a doctor. And he's the patron saint of doctors and stuff like that. His, now what we think of as doctors would be very different than what the ancient world thought of as doctors. So it's kind of hard to really pin down anything in particular about him from that. But we can also say a little bit about the timing in which this was written. It was likely written around the year eighty or ninety A.D., certainly after the year fifty-nine A.D. because we're told that Festus was a procurator at that point, and that was in fifty-nine A.D. But it seems like it was probably written after seventy A.D. because Luke talks about the destruction of the temple. And so the, the destruction of the temple didn't happen until seventy A.D. by the Romans. So here in Chapter One of Acts that I just read for you, we, we have all sorts of stuff there. I wanted to go through down here with the ascension. So when they had come together, they asked him, "Lord, is this the time when you will restore the kingdom to Israel?" He replied, "It's not for you to know the times or periods that the Father has set by his own authority, but you will receive power when the Holy Spirit has come upon you and you will be my witnesses in Jerusalem, in all Judea and Samaria, and to the ends of the earth." When he said this, as they were watching, he was lifted up and a cloud took him out of their sight. While he was going and they were gazing up towards heaven, suddenly two men in white robes stood by them. They said, "Men of Galilee, why do you stand looking up toward heaven? This Jesus who's been taken up from you into heaven will come in the same way as you saw him go into heaven." And this story of the ascension is interesting because it's only Luke and Luke Acts in which we get this story about Jesus's ascension after his appearances post resurrection. And it's one of those things that I feel like is, is always an issue for us. Lots of times people want to know, "When is it that you'll restore the kingdom to Israel, Jesus?" The disciples ask him there in verse six. And what was his response? Y'all could talk.
It's not for you to know the time or period.
Yeah, yeah. He says, he says basically, "That's not something you need to be concerned about. You need to be concerned about being my witnesses." And so that's interesting, isn't it? There's lots of people even now who still want to speculate as to when Jesus is coming back, you know? And even Jesus tells us in Mark, Chapter Thirteen, that he doesn't even know when he's coming back, that only the Father knows. So if anybody claims to know that, then they're claiming to be smarter than Jesus. I always look upon such things with great skepticism. It's, it's worth noting also, right here in this little section of the ascension, that there's, there's two things going on that I think we need to often remember with all this. Have you, have you ever heard of monks being accused of navel, being navel gazers? Have you ever heard that phrase before? Basically, it's kind of saying, "You're not doing enough stuff in the world. All you're doing is thinking about heaven." But you know, there's lots of stuff to be thinking about here on earth too. And that dichotomy between heaven and earth and being so focused on heaven that you miss out on what's here on earth. While he was going, they were gazing up towards heaven and suddenly two men in white robes stood by them. "Men of Galilee, why do you stand looking up towards heaven?" You know, like, we have to balance our lives, not just on thinking about heaven and, and all that sort of stuff, but also in living here on earth and living out our calling as disciples of Jesus as well. So this next section, and we'll go through Chapter Two, Verse Forty-One today. I, so I'll try to cover all of that and I'll give you a little lesson plan for next week too, for the passages that we'll be talking about. We'll, we'll basically be covering around two chapters or so a week. And so I just wanted to kind of hit the highlights of some of this stuff right now. The, the section here, beginning with verse twelve, talks about Matthias being chosen to replace Judas. You want to read it for us, Eunice?
I'll try.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Read twelve through nineteen.
Okay. "Then they returned to Jerusalem from the mount called Olivet, which is near Jerusalem, a Sabbath day's journey away. When they had entered the city, they went to the room upstairs where they were staying, Peter and John, and James, and Andrew, Philip, and Thomas, Bartholomew, and Matthew, James, son of Alpheus, and Simon the Zealot, and Judas, son of James. All these were constantly devoting themselves to prayer, together with certain women, including Mary, the mother of Jesus, as well as his brothers. In those days, Peter stood up among the believers. Together the crowd numbered about one hundred twenty persons and said, 'Friends, the scripture had to be filled, which the Holy Spirit through David foretold concerning Judas, who became a guide for those who arrested Jesus. For he was numbered among us and was allotted his share in this ministry. Now this man acquired a field with the reward of his wickedness, and falling headlong, he burst open in the middle, and all his bowels gushed out.' This became known to all the residents of Jerusalem, so that the field was called in their language, Hackldama, that is, Field of Blood."
Thank you. That's rather graphic, huh?
Pretty gory.
It's interesting that, that we have that little story about Judas there, isn't it? And it's, it's interesting too that they decide, moving on, "So one of the men who have accompanied us during all the time that the Lord Jesus went in and out among us, beginning from the baptism of John until the day when he was taken up from us, one of these must become a witness with us to his resurrection." So they proposed two, Joseph called Bar-Sabas, who was also known as Justice, and Matthias. Then they prayed and said, "Lord, you know everyone's heart. Show us which one of these two you've chosen to take the place in this ministry and apostleship from which Judas turned aside to go to his own place." And they cast lots for them and a lot fell on Matthias, and he was added to the eleven apostles. It's, I, I find this kind of funny because there's, in, in the names of all the followers that are mentioned in the Bible, we get Mary, Mary Magdalene, and then there's the other Mary. I always feel for the other Mary. Like, couldn't they figure out something? And oftentimes there's even women who just go unnamed entirely. And yet this guy, Joseph called Bar-Sabas, who is also known as Justice, we, we got three names for this dude. And then Matthias winds up being the one who was chosen just totally by a flip of a quarter, basically. And this is the only time in Scripture that these two folks ever come up. We don't hear anything about them in the Bible anymore. This is the only spot where they're mentioned. It reminds me though, that it seems like a bit of a conundrum for the disciples because we, we have it to where, why, why do we have to have twelve? You know, like, there were twelve and then there were eleven after Judas had his bowels gush out of him. But it's like, it makes me think of, makes me mindful at least of the way things happen in church all the time. You know, well, we gotta have it just like it always was. So let's get another one in here to, to replace him. But oftentimes I feel like there, there's some things that, you know, not so much in this situation that we're talking about here with the disciples, but you know, oftentimes in church, it becomes one of those things of, "It's always been this way." And then the dreaded phrase, "Oh, we've never done it that way before," comes up time and time again, doesn't it? But it's interesting, the requirements that Peter comes up with, they're more stringent than the, the requirements that Jesus had for the apostles were. Did you notice that? Peter himself can't even qualify as, as being one of these to replace because he fled from Jesus at the crucifixion, didn't he? So that's, uh, it's kind of interesting. I, there, there was this movie that came out a while back called Dogma, and Chris Rock was in it. He played Rufus, the thirteenth apostle. And Ben Affleck and Matt Damon, who were in the movie, is these fallen angels. They're like, "Well, I've never heard of you before." He's like, "I was kept out of the Bible because I was black." So anyway, I think about Rufus, the thirteenth apostle, sometimes whenever, whenever I read about that. But, well, let's, let's move on. Any, any questions or thoughts in your mind right now about this first chapter?
No.
No.
Well, we'll move on to Pentecost in Chapter Two. Anybody want to read it for us?
I will.
Thanks, Tammy.
I might not pronounce these words right, but I'll be.
Oh, I'll tell you what, I'll, whenever you get to, to verse eight, I'll, I'll pick up for you.
Okay. "When the day of Pentecost had come, they were all together in one place, and suddenly from heaven there was a sound like the rush of violent wind, and it filled the entire house where they were sitting. Divided tongues as a fire appeared among them, and a tongue rested on each of them. All of them were filled with the Holy Spirit and began to speak in other languages as the Spirit gave them ability. Now there were devout Jews from every nation under heaven living in Jerusalem. And at this sound, the crowd gathered and was bewildered, because each one heard them speaking in the native language of each. Amazed and astonished, they asked, 'Are not all these who are speaking Galileans? And how is that we hear each of us in our own native language?'
Okay. Beeds, Elamites, and residents of Mesopotamia, Judea, Cappadocia, Pontus, and Asia, Fergia, and Pamphlia, Egypt and the parts of Libya belonging to Cyrene, and visitors from Rome, both Jews and proselytes, cretins and Arabs, in our own languages, we hear them speaking about God's deeds of power. All were amazed and perplexed, saying to one another, 'What does this mean?' But others sneered and said, 'They're filled with new wine.'" That's quite a story, isn't it? It's one we hear each, each year at Pentecost. But quite the, quite the passage. From the very outset, the early church was multilingual and multicultural, wasn't it? I, I think it's something that we often forget, especially in our own context. You know, we get used to church being the way that it is and we often forget just how multicultural and multilingual the church around the world is and always was. That, you know, it didn't start with us and let's hope it doesn't end with us. But at the same time, the church is filled with a very broad group of people and all sorts of different languages and everything else. You know, it reminds me of the way that historically, especially back in colonial times, the way in which people were quote-unquote evangelized, really oftentimes native folks were, were just abused, you know? I mean, it wasn't anything of sharing the good news with them. It was oftentimes just trying to make them into other versions of good Americans or good Englishmen or good Spanish folk, you know? Especially in colonial times. But I, I've also struck by that verse thirteen, "But others sneered and said, 'They're filled with new wine.'" What is it about new wine? Why, why did they say that? Why did they just say they're filled with wine? Any thoughts?
I don't know.
So the opposite of new wine is old wine, right? And old wine is better wine. So you're basically accusing them of being, of drinking cheap wine. That they're, they're filled with cheap wine, not just good wine, you know? Because typically, if you have good wine, most folks who, who drink really nice wine don't drink a lot of it. And most of the folks who drink a whole lot of it typically drink pretty cheap wine. And so it's, they're basically calling them a bunch of cheap drunks. So that's kind of funny, I think, that it's, it's not only a sneer about them being drunks, but, but the type of drunks that they are. All the memes circulating through Facebook and late night TV and whatnot, seems like everybody's filled with new wine right now with all this quarantine stuff, right? But I, oh, let's go down here to the, the next few verses, Peter addressing the crowd. "But Peter, standing with the eleven, raised his voice and addressed the men of Judea and all who live in Jerusalem. Let this be known to you and listen to what I say. Indeed, these are not drunk, as you suppose, for it's only nine o'clock in the morning. No, this is what was spoken through the prophet Joel. In the last days it will be God declares, 'That I will pour out my Spirit upon all flesh, and your sons and your daughters shall prophesy, and your young men shall see visions, and your old men shall dream dreams. Even upon my slaves, both men and women in those days, I will pour out my Spirit, and they shall prophesy. And I'll show importance in the heaven above and signs on the earth below, blood and fire and smoky mist. The sun shall be turned to darkness and the moon to blood before the coming of the Lord's great and glorious day. Then everyone who calls on the name of the Lord shall be saved.'" And so this is an interesting thing because this quote from Joel, well, let's, let's remember that inequality like existed in biblical times too. And there was a definite hierarchy that was in play where, you know, the, the father was the head of the household, basically, and the head of everything. And sons mattered more than daughters. And people who were free mattered more than people who were slaves. You know, there was quite a bit of inequality going on at that time. And this quote from Joel shows us that like, there will be more equality, you know? "Your sons and your daughters, and I'll pour out my Spirit on all men, slaves and free." You know, so we get a great equalizing thing that's supposedly happening here when the Spirit is coming upon the early church. And so then we bust into this sermon that Peter decides to, to give to the crowd that was gathered there. "You that are Israelites, listen to what I have to say. Jesus of Nazareth, a man attested to you by God with deeds of power, wonders and signs that God did through him among you. As you yourselves know, this man handed over to you according to the definite plan and foreknowledge of God. You crucified and killed by the hands of those outside the law, but God raised him up, having freed him from death, because it was impossible for him to be held in its power. Fellow, moving on down, 'Fellow Israelites, I may say to you confidently of our ancestor David, that he both died and was buried in his tombs with us to this day. Since he was a prophet, he knew that God had sworn with an oath to, to him that he would put one of his descendants on his throne. This Jesus God raised up, and of that, all of us are witnesses. Being therefore exalted at the right hand of God, and having received from the Father the promise of the Holy Spirit, he's poured out this that you both see and hear.'" he's poured out this that you both see and hear. Therefore, let the entire house of Israel know with certainty that God has made him both Lord and Messiah, this Jesus whom you crucified. And now, when they heard this, they were cut to the heart. And they said to Peter and the others, apostles, brothers, 'What should we do?'" And Peter said to them, "Repent and be baptized, every one of you, in the name of Jesus Christ, so that your sins may be forgiven, and you'll receive the gift of the Holy Spirit, for the promises for you, for your children, and for all who are far away, everyone whom the Lord our God calls to him. And he testified with many other arguments and exhorted them, saying, 'Save yourselves from this corrupt generation.' So those who welcomed his message were baptized. And that day, about three thousand persons were at it. They devoted themselves to the apostles' teaching and fellowship, to the breaking of bread and prayers." So Peter gave kind of a long sermon in response to the crowd jeering him that the apostles were just drunk on cheap wine. And Peter stands up, and then he starts accusing all of the people that were there, that crowd, of killing Jesus. What do you think about that? Why would Peter say that they all killed Jesus, rather than? I mean, especially Luke, he seems to go to great lengths to show that it was the Romans and the Jews who did that, not just the regular old people. What do you think's going on there? Well, I think that, so one of my professors at Duke, his name is Peter Story, and he used to be the bishop of the Methodist Church in South Africa. He was Nelson Mandela's chaplain on Robben Island for a while. And Peter Story used to say that we create institutions to do our sinning for us. And he would oftentimes remind us that we're many times complicit in the sin that goes on around us, especially if we don't speak out against it. If there's this Spanish proverb, it says, "The one who kills the cow is not guiltier than the one who holds it down." Reminding everybody that we're all complicit in lots of ways whenever it comes to guilt. This is also one of the few times that numbers are actually mentioned when it comes to the early church. We heard that the group that started was about 120 people. And then we heard that that number was about 3,000 after that. So it's a pretty effective sermon, it seems, for the folks who were there in person. But, you know, I think oftentimes, we can come up with excuses that are like, you know, "Oh, I was just following orders. Or I was just doing what I was told to do. I, you know, I didn't know this would happen if I did this." Or I, you know, we're oftentimes good at making excuses. But at the same time, I think we probably don't take enough blame for the things that we are to blame for, and for greater societal ills even. One of the things that the Methodists were known for doing in England, whenever the movement first started, was for reaching out to the populations that were much more blue collar, to the coal miners in particular, in certain areas, and the tin miners in Wales. There were a lot of folks that the Methodists reached who had been just forgotten by society, the church included. And so one of the big things that John Wesley tried to do was to reach out to those lower classes, the working-class folks, and to try to get them better working conditions, too. And more equitable pay for what it was that they were doing. So I think it's always important for us to remember that there are a number of injustices that still go on in our society. And if we're not out there, you know, helping to make things better, then we're part of the problem, too, you know? And so I think that's a good lesson for us to remember in the midst of all this as we're talking about guilt and stuff like that. I mean, in that sense, everybody through time can be lumped in together with that crowd that Peter was speaking to, can't we?
Yes.
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 Well, what did y'all, what were some of y'all's thoughts with all of this? This is as far as I was going to go. We'll pick up next week with verse 43. And hey, let me tell you, I'll give you just a little foretaste of glory divine here. Verse 43. "All came upon everyone, because many wonders and signs were being done by the apostles. All who believed were together and had all things in common. They would sell their possessions and goods and distribute the proceeds to all as any had need."
Easy.
That's some, that, there's going to be some fun stuff to talk about next time. But let's not go there just yet. Let's kind of recap everything that we've done today. What are some of your thoughts that might have struck you as we went through all this today? Was there maybe one passage that you, that kind of leaped out at you more than another one, maybe?
I'm going to ask about Judas. Maybe I misunderstood this. The part of his intestines being
Yeah.
poured out. That was Judas, right?
Yes.
But I thought Judas hanged himself.
Well, he did. And so falling headlong is one of the things that we, that he mentioned. That's another way of saying that he was hanged, falling headlong. So, yeah, I mean, it's kind of a situation of both of those things happening. This is the only spot where, I mean, Luke gives us a lot more detail right here, doesn't he? Than we get in the Gospels about all that. And there's another disciple who's named Judas as well, but it's a different Judas. So there were two Judases amongst the apostles.
Judas, son of James.
You know, one other thing that I thought was important that I didn't get a chance to mention when we were going through this section here about Judas and Matthias replacing him, is that list of disciples. Let me pull that up for us from Luke. There was, let's see, that's from Luke 6. Give me just a second to get to that one. Luke 6, verse 14. Okay, so here's the, he chose 12. "When the day came, he called his disciples and chose 12 of them, whom he also named apostles: Simon, whom he named Peter, brother Andrew, James, and John, and Philip, and Bartholomew, and Matthew, and Thomas, and James, son of Alpheus, and Simon, who was called the zealot, and Judas, son of James. And Judas is scared." Let me, and so that list of disciples there. Matthew was a tax collector. And Simon, who was called the zealot. So those are disciples that are as polar opposites that you can get. Matthew was a tax collector who was in league with Rome. And then Simon the zealot was one of those, like hardcore freedom fighter type who wanted to kill Rome and restore the country to being ruled by, you know, an Israeli king, sort of thing. And so you can't get people that are on more separate sides than Simon the zealot and Matthew the tax collector. It would be like Alexandria Ocasio-Cortez and Ron Paul. I mean, it'd be like just people from the far left and people from the far right, and them all being part of that same group of Jesus' disciples. And so, I mean, I feel like that's a really important thing that oftentimes gets overlooked, is just how diverse that group of disciples was. And that Jesus intentionally chose people to be his followers that didn't agree with each other, you know? That held very divergent views from one another. And to my mind, that's one of the most important things for us to remember. That's one of the things I like about the Methodist Church, is that we're, you know, composed of people. One person has characterized the United Methodist Church as the extreme center of Protestantism. You know, like, we got people on the left, we got people on the right, and everybody in between. Most of us fall somewhere in that in-between, you know? But in being mindful of the fact that Matthew the tax collector and Simon the zealot were both part of that inner group of disciples, and both held widely divergent views from each other, they were still a part of the early church and still people that Jesus brought together. And so I think that the lesson for us as United Methodists to learn is that, you know, we can make this tent bigger, so to speak, that we don't have to agree with each other on every little thing. You know, we could be Democrat, Republican, Independent, whatever. It doesn't matter. What matters more than any of that is who we call Lord. So that I feel like was an important thing that, you know, is kind of subtle to you and me in just reading a list of names. But really, it's not at all subtle. It's pretty in-your-face if you know who those folks are. And if you take that lesson and, you know, fan it out to what it really says, it's one that really convicts me. That I just wanted to lift that up to you today also. Any thoughts on that? Or anything else that we've been looking at? Well, I thought y'all might be a little more tolerant with this. Let me go ahead and stop sharing my screen here, so we can see each other all again. Well, I appreciate y'all taking some time to join in with this. Hope y'all are doing okay. Is there any prayer concerns you'd lift up, or anything like that?
We have a celebration.
Yeah?
Terry had his four-month injection yesterday, I mean, Monday. And they also checked his numbers. And his prostate numbers had come down. The two previous injections were working, so.
Yay.
Oh, good. That's good.
Very good.
Boy, it is quiet.
Well, you know, quiet's not a bad thing, is it?
I guess.
I kind of enjoy quiet sometimes. In a house full of girls.
Reverse for me.
Me, too.
Just pray that we can learn how to be more tech-savvy. I just, my son just told me, he said, "Mom, it sounded like you were there. You just didn't click the right button."
Yeah.
Well, you're there now.
We got you now, Janice. So thank you for braving the technology alongside. I mean, I'm not one of those millennials, I'm a Gen X'er. So I grew up without technology for the first little while, and then had to learn it. But at the same time, I feel like it's, I'm having to learn all sorts of new stuff during all this. I knew next to nothing about making videos and stuff before this quarantine thing began. And I know lots of pastors out there who are not doing much of anything. But I feel like our worship videos on Sunday is one of the most important things we can do.
Yes.
Oh, yes. I love that.
I appreciate y'all's willingness to help out in all sorts of ways. And thank you for coming on today to study Acts with me.
Curtis, how far did we go? We start at verse 43 of Chapter 2.
I'll go next week. So I had a suggestion on that for you all. We'll go from Acts 2:43 to Chapter 5, verse 11. And so what I would recommend is splitting it up. Well, I mean, this is just my recommendation, you can take it or leave it. But one thing that might be nice is if you, I like to sit out on the front porch in the morning and have some coffee or some other source of caffeine. And, but one of the nicest things about that is, you know, you could sit out there and just read a short passage of Scripture and think about it, and just be mindful during the morning time. And anyway, so I would suggest dividing this up into seven readings, one for each day. And so if you did it like that, you could go for the first day, Acts 2:42 through 47. For the next day, Chapter 3, verses 1 through 10. For the next one, Chapter 3, 11 through 26. Chapter 4, 1 through 12. Chapter 4, this would be Day 5. Chapter 4, verses 13 through 31. Then just 32 through 35 of Chapter 4. And then for the last day, a little bigger section, 4:36 through 5:11. If you wanted to divide it up like that, or you could just read it all in one fell swoop. But that 42 through 47, that's a doozy. And, I mean, they're all pretty crazy to some extent with some of this stuff. Particularly, also, oh, let me, let me go to, give me just a second to pull up that Acts 5 passage. I think that might be, yeah, Ananias and Sapphira. That one, too. That's some good stuff. There is some good, good stuff in here. So I would, I would say, have fun with it. And if you would, jot down any questions that you might have, or any reflections, things like that, that you might have while you've been reading it. And feel free to share those with me before the study, if you want, or after, or whatever. There's all sorts of good stuff in here. And man, I'm excited about the one for next week. And man, I am, I'm excited about the one for next week. We get seeming like communist apostles and Ananias and Sapphira. Woo! Anyway, there's gonna be all sorts of fun stuff. So thank you for, for joining us. And, uh, I'll, I'll try to also, once this recording becomes, uh, available and once it gets processed and everything, I'll put it on the website also. I'll be making another page that I'm just gonna call Bible Studies under, um, the Ministries tab there on our, uh, church website. So, um, folks can see and, uh, hear how y'all didn't interact with me any. But, uh, thank you again, and we'll plan on doing this again, uh, next Wednesday at three. If that, does that time work okay for everybody?
Yeah.
Yes.
It's fine with me.
I know there's some who, uh, might not be able to, to make it quite so, uh, so early in the day and others who can't make it later in the day. And so it's always kind of a, uh, you know, broad scattered approach, but, um, I hope the folks who, who weren't able to be here live with us could still tune in if they like and, uh, and do this. Any, any other questions with regards to the study itself? Well, I thought I would, uh, we're right at four o'clock, so that gives us about an hour that we've been together. So thank you so much for that. I didn't think we'd be able to cover all that. Next week, I, I expect y'all to, uh, to talk a little more to me, okay? There'll be a lot to talk about next week, trust me. But I, I sure appreciate your time today, so God bless.
Bye-bye.
Bye, everybody.
Bye.